Good to go? All right. Well, let's get going if we're good to go. So it's seven o'clock. I'm going to call the meeting to order, and I'll ask everyone to stand, please, for O Canada. Thanks, everyone. And I guess we'll move on to the roll call of councillors.
Madam Morton, thank you. District One, councillor Shaun Sampson.
Present.
Thank you. District Two, councillor Michael Diggden.
Present.
Thank you. District Three, councillor Melanie Sampson.
Present.
District Four, Warden Amanda Momberton.
Present.
And District Five, deputy Warden Brent Sampson.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Troy. Are there any items this evening to be added to the agenda for councillors? Okay, so I'm not hearing any. Maybe I don't have any to add either, but I do want to do a shout out of congratulations to the recipients of the Queen's Jubilee, Platinum Jubilee, I believe it was, medals this past weekend. So congratulations to everyone, well deserved. So I'm looking for a motion then to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, deputy Warden. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second.
Thank you councillor Sampson. Any further discussion on the agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. And the next is the review of the minutes from the December 19th, 2022, regular council meeting, which seems like last year. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes if there are no errors?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you councillor Shaun Sampson. Second or please?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you councillor Mike Diggden. Any further discussion on the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. So before we jump into our committee reports, we do generally open for a question period in case there are folks in the gallery or online watching who might have some questions about the items on the Committee of the Whole report. And I did have a question earlier about why we do a question period before Committee of the Whole. And I'm just going to mention the number to call. So it's 902-226-9885 if you have questions and you're watching. And the reason we do that before Committee of the Whole report is to give people a chance to ask those questions in advance of the report being fully approved. So I know we remember that, but sometimes it's a good refresher as well. So I'll just give it a minute. If there are questions, that number is 226-9885. Okay. I know there's a time lag, but I think probably we're safe. So we'll move on. Thank you Shelley for being ready, at the ready for calls should they come in. And we will have another question period at the end of the agenda as well. So we'll move on to committee reports, and I'm going to hand things off to deputy Warden Brent Sampson, who has a bit of a novel to read for us tonight. So it'll be you, deputy Warden.
Committee of the Whole Report, January 2023. The committee met on January 9th, 2022. I should say 2023, I guess. The committee discussed Bavens Hill Lookoff. I move that council accept the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole, that council defer the estimated costs to carry out the work to expand the Bavens Hill Lookoff by 40 meters west along Highway 206 to the 2023-2024 budget deliberations.
Okay, so we have a motion. Could I have a second or on that, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Diggden. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? I think that motion's carried.
The committee discussed the purchase of a new fleet vehicle. I move that council accept the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole, that council approve the purchase of a new fleet vehicle at the tendered cost of $72,369 plus HST, with the costs being incurred in the 2023-2024 fiscal year, and further move that the CAO be authorized to negotiate any increase in price resulting from supply of a 2024 model vehicle if no 2023 model vehicles are available at the time of order or delivery.
Thank you deputy Warden. Could I have a second or on that motion, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion's carried.
The committee discussed the marketing levy update. I move that council accept the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole, that council refer the municipality of the County of Richmond Marketing Levy Bylaw Number 60 to the Bylaw Policy Committee for review and recommendation.
Okay, thank you deputy Warden. Could I have a second or on that motion?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Thank you councillor Shaun Sampson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion's carried.
The committee discussed CAO Employee Success Plan. I move that council accept the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole, that council refer the CAO Employee Success Plan to the Bylaw Policy Committee.
Okay, thanks deputy Warden. Could I have a second or on that motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Diggden. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried.
This concludes the Committee of the Whole Report for the month of January 2023, and I move its adoption.
Thank you. Could I have a second or on the report approval, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. So we do have another committee report. Next on the agenda is the report from the Bylaw and Policy Committee, so I'll hand that back to you, deputy Warden.
Bylaw Policy Committee Report for the month of December 2022. The committee met on December 12th, 2022. The committee discussed the storm policy. I move that council accept the recommendation of the Bylaw Policy Committee and that council advance the storm policy to a regular council meeting for adoption.
Could I have a second or on that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you councillor Shaun Sampson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion's carried.
In response to a request of interest for a public member advertising in the October 2022, the committee received correspondence regarding an application to join. Motion required for approval of a member. I move that council approve Lois Landry as a member of the Bylaw and Policy Committee.
Could I have a second or on that motion?
I asked.
All right, thank you councillor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion?
I just have one question on the addition to members. And again, Lois is from my district, but I'm just wondering, do you have to become, do you have to be a member, resident of Richmond County?
I'd have to go back and check the terms of reference, but we can double check that.
And I don't know that she moved or didn't move. I just know she was going to move. So I just, and again, it was asked of me, so I...
Sure.
I would guess that that would be, but I will have to confirm.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll check the terms.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion?
Do you want that part deferred then? Until confirmation, because we probably wouldn't want to approve it if she's...
Would we be able to make the motion assuming it meets the terms of reference?
Yeah.
Would we be able to word it like that?
You can.
Yeah.
And that way, if there's an issue...
So long as she meets the criteria set out in the terms of reference, you can make your motion that way, or...
And if it needs to be rescinded, we can do that later.
Hundred percent we can.
You know, if she...
Rather than doing it again.
Because I mean, anybody could be a public member on any committee and then move, and you know what I mean? So we still have to double check the criteria for that.
I didn't mean to draw monkey wrench in it.
No, no, thank you. It's a good question, something for us to check on.
It is a good question.
If that's not in our terms of reference, then it's certainly something we could think about adding in, for sure.
For sure.
Okay. So any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried.
This concludes the Bylaw Policy Committee Report for the month of December 2022, and I move its adoption.
Thank you councillor, or sorry, deputy Warden Brent Sampson. Any further discussion on that? Or sorry, I need a second or on that motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the Bylaw Policy Committee Report? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. All right, thanks very much deputy Warden. There's a little bit of work we were into there at our last few meetings, so that's great. The next item on our agenda is a motion to adopt. And it's for the storm policy that the deputy Warden was just discussing. And the storm policy has been provided in your, the agenda package. And I'm going to just maybe open for discussion from council if you have any comments on the draft that was presented. This was referred from Bylaw Policy. And if there's no comments or additional discussion, then I'd just seek a motion to approve it.
I'll move that we adopt the storm policy as a policy through municipality of the County of Richmond.
Okay. Thank you councillor Melanie Sampson. Could I have a second or please?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you councillor Shaun Sampson. Is there any further discussion on the storm policy? Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. All right. So the next item is the second reading and approval. So these were from the Planning Advisory Committee originally, and then of course, opened for public hearing just prior to our meeting this evening. The first is to approve entering into a development agreement for four tourist cabins and cottages on Lot 18, PID 751-44063 on Orion Crescent, Walkerville, Richmond County. So we'd be looking for a motion at this point that council give the second reading to approve entering into the development agreement for the property as described, so... Can I move her on that, please?
I will.
Thank you councillor Melanie Sampson. Could I have a second or?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Shaun Sampson. Any further discussion on that item? Okay, so there being none, all those in favor, please, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion is carried. I'm getting a little lost in my words here, sorry about that. The next item for second reading and approval was the proposed land use bylaw amendment to rezone the portions of properties identified as PID 750-86868, 751-36218, 750-52530, 75219568, and 750-86397 from the residential rural R2 Zone to the residential Village R1 Zone to allow for smaller lot subdivisions. So we would need a motion to that effect, please.
I'll move that.
Okay, thank you deputy Warden. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second it.
All right, thank you councillor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion on that item? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Get us trucking right along here through our agenda, all right. And so the next item on the agenda, I believe is going to take a little bit more time. So this is the new business, and it's related to our governance and boundary review. And if councillors will indulge me, I just wanted to provide a little bit of context just for members of the public who may have been hearing about recent information sessions. Just wanted to give a quick little synopsis on where we are so far. So I guess the first question we've been answering at some of these information sessions lately and have been since the process started back in June, I think, of last year, is why are we doing this? And it is that the Municipal Government Act requires municipalities to review council size and district boundaries every eight years. So the last one was done in 2014, and our time was 2022 to start a new one. So it was not initiated by council. It was a requirement of the provincial government. It is, again, kind of a one-two punch. I've been telling people, number one, to figure out the number of councillors that should be representing the municipality, and also to look at the boundaries of the various districts within the municipality. Very specific to that scope. Other questions really are not part of this study, something we can entertain at a later date, though, for sure. Just wanted to give a quick summary of the five criteria that the Nova Scotia Utility and Review Board will be reviewing when making their decisions. So we will submit a report to the UARB. They will make a final decision. And it is that voter parity is within 10% plus or minus of average of all districts. There are communities of interest recognizing distinct communities, maintaining their integrity, population and area. So where there's high density or, you know, large territories, taking that into consideration. Contiguity, so districts should generally be connected, and strong recognizable boundaries. So at this point in time, I know there have been many in-person sessions so far. We've had, I think, six in the last number of weeks alone. There's been three surveys put out. The first focused on council size. The second survey focusing on geography did have an error in it, and I think councillors, we discussed that before Christmas and was a big part of the reason that we wanted to get an extension. So we've had our deadline extended from the end of December 2022 to February 15th, I think, if I'm not mistaken, 2023. And with that extension, we did issue another survey, which was very recently closed. And I think, you know, I think, wanted to recognize the members of the public who've been asking that I think, you know, we could have probably done a better job on the communications early on around this, and something that we'll absolutely kind of take note of in the future going forward. You know, I know that each of us has had conversations in our communities at this point and with residents about, you know, about what the impacts will potentially be. Communities being split has been a big part of the discussion. I think we need to recognize that that's what happens when we draw... You know, I don't want to say imaginary lines, but we draw lines around communities. There's always going to be some kind of interruption of the natural flow of people. So I think that's why it's so important for us to be, you know, have diverse opinions at the table and make decisions in the best interest of the county. Our population has been declining pretty steadily. It has leveled off, I believe, in the last census, but not projected to really increase. Province-wide, the UARB has been taking an approach of reducing council sizes over the last number of years. They do have the final decision, and that's what we need to consider. And so any report or recommendation that we would forward to UARB, I think we need to be really strong in our rationale as to why we're going in a certain direction. And there had been some talk about, you know, adding new councillors and what that might cost. And there's no question, there would be, you know, in today's world, you know what I mean, at the current rates of, you know, stipends and laptops and travel and all of that, there would be an increase should we increase council size, or a decrease should we decrease council size. So that's kind of how that would work. And we do have right now a draft report, I believe, submitted to us by StanTech. There's still markups in it, so it doesn't appear to be finalized, which I know I have some questions on. And, you know, we can kind of discuss if we want to ask those questions here or how we want to proceed with that. And I guess at this point, I wanted to, you know, maybe summarize some of the comments that I had heard in the various information sessions and would ask councillors to jump in, or if you had conversations in community with individuals. Like I've heard comments just, you know, such as every penny of tax rate quickly adds up to a dollar, and people are really struggling. Voter parity is important, but there are extenuating geographical circumstances with Almadame, with sparse populations in the east, and also population density in St. Peters. There were some comments around keeping areas of water and sewer infrastructure together. There were comments around, you know, keeping areas around sort of commercial centers together, like the Village or Erischat. And how Richmond County has seen, you know, in the last review, dramatic change, a reduction from 10 to five councillors. And, you know, voters are still getting used to the new districts, but also to the, a different governance style, because that's what it has meant. And maybe more time is needed to adjust. So I heard all kinds of those types of comments. And I don't know, councillors, if there's anything you'd like to add in at this point that you may have heard from constituents in your area that might... I'll just open that for comment. I know I was busy taking notes at them, but... If not, I can jump to options. But councillor Sampson, if you...
No, I mean, for me, we've had some public consultations. And I think, you know, first off, I just want to say thank you to the community organizations and the establishments and the halls and legions and, you know, for helping us organize these events. And I want to thank the people that did attend, you know, have their voices heard and have some open dialogue with us. And I also want to thank all of you around the table for your work ethic and the way we represent ourselves and the way that we respect the process here around this table. And the reason I say that is that during one of the open houses in the schools, one resident said that no matter which way we divide these districts or whichever way you're going to look at it, you're going to have community division. But he said what was nice to see and was concerning in the past is that it doesn't seem like there's any council division around this table. So that was a compliment to us and is a compliment to you guys, right? And to everybody around this table. When I campaigned, if you guys remember during the debate at Talal, I said that if I had some advice for all of us, it would be to not stop campaigning after the election. And what I meant by that was not every vote is going to be 5-0 around this table. If it was, then people would be questioning us, right? But we campaign our ideas and our opinions and our thoughts when it comes from one vote to the other. And we vote on it, and then we do it in a respectful manner, and then we move on, right? So that's encouraging. Some people are very encouraged about that. So just wanted to thank everybody. When it came to the open houses for me, a lot of people said that they did fill in the survey, just punched in five or seven, never filled any comments, you know. So once we did our open houses, it went from, I picked seven because more representation, but then I didn't want any community division. And then I didn't want it to cost us $45,000 per councillor, which is $90,000, which is a cent of tax increase, right? So it was good to hear from everybody, and I want to thank everybody for their engagement, right? So, yeah. I think it's important that we do this on, you know, like I was telling people, we're not going to be able to knock on doors when someone asks us for $250 for recreation. But when it comes to like important topics like this one, I think it's important that we engage the public, right?
Yeah, well said councillor. I do think, like what I'd like to kind of go into next, if, you know, and I'll leave time, of course, for additional comments on what we heard over the last, you know, I would say not just through the information sessions, but also from talking to our residents and, you know, discussing this in general in the community. I do want to leave more time for that. But I would like to kind of then move into, these are the options we have ahead of us. And then, again, go around the table and seek your recommendations. I know I have a recommendation I'd like to put forward. I'm sure you all do as well, you know? And we can see where they jive, is kind of what I'm thinking. So councillors, do you have any other key comments you wanted to provide, just as we...
No, the only, the only one I would, I would say, and, you know, I apologize as one-fifth of the council for every one of the ones I went to, and that's, you know, none of us, or maybe all of, maybe four of you saw it, and I didn't. But one thing I can say is that on the survey, we didn't provide status quo. And that's what I heard at every single... We provided option five, option seven, but we didn't provide to leave it alone. And it's just, I felt that that was one, or status quo with minor changes. And I felt that that was one of the big things that come back to me when we did the houses and the calls and the... So I, again, I made the apology on one-fifth of...
Well, I think, I think we can give ourselves a little room there because we are, we are, it is a prescribed process, like I said, that one-two, and part of the target is that plus or minus 10%. And our current situation does not meet that target. So I think, I think it's reasonable that we would have gone down a road to look at what voter parity does look like. But I think you're also right, on the other hand. A lesson learned that we need to be rightsizing the process for Richmond County, I guess, is what I would say, so, great point.
Yeah, and I guess what I'd say to that, right, is that, you know, the UARB does allow people to go outside of that plus or minus 10 with good reason. And I think that, you know, to councillor Diggden's point, that would be, that would have been sort of an appropriate comment piece, right? Like, do you think we should do the status quo even though we're not within that range that they're suggesting? And if so, provide your reasoning why? Because I think that's, you know, that could be quite important as we move forward.
That's right, yeah, absolutely.
Madam Morton, just want to remind you, we do have John online as well. If, when you want to get ready to call on him, we can just get him to call in here.
Okay, so thank you Troy, that's a good reminder. So John Hasseltime from StanTech is available for answering questions. I believe he's listening and...
He is.
Yeah, and if we would want him to chime in or if we would need questions answered, we could ask them. At this point, if there's no additional comments, okay. I will maybe just run through what our options are just to frame it up, I'm sure we're all well aware. But just to frame things up, really, we have, I think, five options ahead of us. We can recommend no change to the existing five districts. If we do that, we would have an issue with voter parity, which we would have to provide a rationale for. We could recommend the proposed five districts as presented, although we do see an issue there with district two and three and how it kind of veers on to the mainland. Option three is we could recommend the proposed seven districts as presented, although of course, as mentioned, there would be an issue with increased costs against, you know, you still have that sort of split communities when, especially at the, I guess it would be districts three and four kind of area. Option four is we could recommend, you know, for the, you know, the five districts with slight tweaks to the status quo, to the proposed or to the seven. And then option five would be to recommend something completely different, which I think, I don't think I'm, I don't know that, that I would recommend that. But, but those are essentially the options that are ahead of us at this point in the game. So I'm going to ask for some direction from you folks. I would like to know, would you like me to start? Would we like to start in district one? Would we like to start in district five? In terms of how you want to do this going forward? Would you want me to pick a number out of a hat? Or does somebody want to volunteer to go first? But I really would like to check in with, is that okay? Deputy Warden, you go right ahead, yeah?
No, I'd say on, you know, reading through the report over the weekend and some of it was a lot of information we'd been provided with earlier as well. It gave me a lot of pause to think. Honestly, I prefer the idea of seven, just based on, I think, it'd be better representation. I do understand there'd be a cost, however, there could be ways around that, whether the stipends would be reduced if, if we were to go to seven as well. That being said, I think it probably is, you know, reasonable that a lot of people shifted their thinking to five based on the mapping that was there and not necessarily being as happy with the mapping when the original map of seven that had a, you know, an error in it. They may have liked that, but at the end of the day, we can't go with that, that didn't make any sense. I'd be willing to support going with five, although I think we should try and get within the voter parity where possible. I believe that's, you know, that's where the UARB would, would like us to go. And it may be easier for us to set this than, than to end up with a situation like last time, whereas, you know, the, the decision to council was rejected and then sort of forced upon them. But I'm, I'm open to other options as well. I think what you decide, what you mentioned about option five of something completely new, at this point, that'd be the only one I'd feel is off the table.
Yeah.
I wouldn't be in favor of that at all. Outside of that, I'm willing to consider a few options.
Awesome, thank you Deputy Warden. Seek some volunteers?
Yeah, whatever.
Yeah, okay.
Usually nobody wants to go, so. So, so I'll just sort of say, give a little bit of a history, sort of my thought process. And I shared it with the people at the info session that we hosted last week, weekend before last. You know, originally my thought was seven as well. And the original seven maps seemed to, to look good to me in terms of, you know, keeping communities of interest together. But then when they were, when they were changed and then we thought a little more about the money part of it. And, and again, to Deputy Warden's point, we could reduce the stipend. We could keep the envelope of money for council the same and divide it over seven instead of five. And I, you know, that can happen. I don't know how popular that would be, but, you know, it definitely could happen. But I've certainly come away, come, come around to the idea of five. And, and the last survey, the, the third survey absolutely supports five, you know, a decision of five. I mean, the draft doesn't really give us a real recommendation. So I think that's probably important for folks in the public to know is that typically StanTech would give a recommendation. And although it's in draft form, their recommendation is kind of, we don't, we can't find anything that's conclusive here and so you folks can decide what you think makes sense. What I heard at the information session, what I've heard from people, is that they're happy with five and that they've had a really big change when we went from ten to five. And although it's been eight years, it's only been eight years, right? Is that they, they're still getting accustomed to what district they belong to. And I said it from the very beginning, when we first looked at the map of five, that I was not, you know, I did not think it was, it was a good idea to, to separate parts of the main, you know, to separate out Whiteside and Evanston from the rest of that area in particular. So even if that area was grouped together, but outside of the district, maybe I'd feel differently. But they're really left on their own there. And I think although it does put us out of, you know, out of the ten percent, I think if you talk about communities of interest being together, they need to be in that area of interest. So my suggestion, you know, what I would sort of support is I would support the status quo with some tweaks. And in terms of, you know, the district three that I represent, you know, one of the tweaks I certainly see, it was supported by every single survey, people saying the same message, which was that Lennox Passage belonged in district three. And so of course, I'm a numbers person, so I do recognize that, you know, currently district two in its current format is already, you know, at a minus thirteen and a half percent. And if I would take the thirty-eight people that are surveyed that are in that area out, they're going to be a minus sixteen. And if I would add them into the district three, which is already over, I'm going to be, you know, that district, district three would be over by thirteen. But I do, again, we're, when we're talking about percentages, that's important. But if we're talking about number of people, it doesn't feel as heavy as the percentage. So, you know, you're literally talking about very few people in the difference that would bring us to that parity. And I think that the harm that it would cause in terms of people identifying with the councillor or the councillor identifying with the area is greater than that difference. So I think there's also been like a little conversation that one of the things that could happen would be, like, again, I'll just talk district three because that's my, you know, the area I represent, would be, you know, like St. George's Channel, if that went into district four, that could bring district three into some line. I'm not really supportive of that either. I'm, I'm open to any conversation. But again, I feel like if we look at areas of interest, I feel like they really identify themselves with the folks in the Dundee area and West Bay area. You know, go to the AGM for St. George's Channel Hall, that's the people that I see in that. Certainly people from the points in West Bay as well, but, you know, I do see those folks there. So my thought would be stick with five. The tweaks I would propose in my own area would be to include Lennox Passage, period.
Okay, thank you councillor Melanie Sampson, all right. Councillor Sean Sampson?
Yep, so for me, when you look at the first couple of surveys, there was a hundred and six people that took that survey. And that weighed heavily on proposed seven or seven councillors. I think it was like forty-two percent to like twenty-one or twenty-two percent. Again, that was only a hundred and six out of seventy-five, a hundred and eighty-two residents. So it was less than one percent of the population that took that survey, right? And so then we embarked on some open houses and some public consultations and we had six or seven of those. And I think when you tally all those numbers up, I think it was close to like eighty people or so.
Yeah, I think closer to seventy, but yeah.
Yeah, so seventy to eighty, so. So you're looking at like, you know, six surveys, six open houses with seventy and months and months of surveys with one oh six. So for me, it's good to hear from the public verbally. What the public said in most of our cases in Jemers Island, in the schools, at the Picas just recently is status quo with minor tweaks, if we had to make minor tweaks. And councillor Melanie, you alluded to those minor tweaks, right? That would be, yeah, taking Lennox Passage out of district two. Or if it has to stay that way, then it has to. But yeah, for the thirty-eight voters, it's not going to make too much of a difference, right? When you look back in nineteen ninety-seven, nineteen ninety-nine, you know, you've seen ranges from minus twenty-eight to plus thirty when it came to parity, right? Back in two thousand and eight, it was the same thing, right? So that parity is there if you plead your case and you show community division or community involvement and stuff like that, right? So for me, I would go down that road of, and again, the last survey said, yeah. You know, after we had the public consultations and the people spoke, the survey went from seven back to in favor of five, right? So that would be my recommendation, five with minor tweaks if we had to.
Are there any specific, any tweaks you want to kind of mention?
Just the tweak that councillor Melanie said, that's what we've heard.
Adding Lennox Passage back to district three.
Right, yeah. And again, that's thirty-eight out of his, thirty-eight into hers. Is that number really going to make a difference when, you know, when it comes to think of things? I don't think it would, right? So I would, yeah, if we're going to make any tweaks to the current status quo that people are in favor of, then that would be the one, yeah.
Okay, thank you councillor. Councillor Mike?
Yeah, I usually don't have much to say, so I'll just, yeah. Well, so I guess I want to start off by, you know, I appreciate definitely everybody's input. What I will say is that I was never, I was never on board for, I guess, a district of seven. And I made no bones to share that with everybody. Nor was I on board for, for change and I made no bones to share that with everybody, I guess. So the, you know, although change is inevitable sometimes, I think one thing I will start off by saying is I would, I would support the five districts with the, with the slight changes. The slight changes, I think I would look at that was discussed around the table that seemed to be missed tonight was the one for Grand Grab area. So only because I believe it's split right now currently between district four and district five. And that's always been one of the discussions.
The Grand Grab Road.
Sorry, Grand Grab Road.
Depends on how far down you live.
Yeah, and in the report, it makes it, it kind of reads as if it's on opposite sides of the road. It's not the case, it's just once you get so far down.
Yeah.
You come into, so there, and actually, there isn't continuity.
Yeah.
Like, you, you have to travel through district four in order to
Yeah.
get back into five, in that case. Not that it's any long distance, but yeah.
No, but for the people, the residents of there, it used to be a, you know, and we, you know, I guess we had the same question, you know, over the, over the talks. One thing I will support was that the people in my, in my district definitely didn't want to see change. They definitely didn't want to see a split. I, one thing I've, I made clear was that I was never in support of giving up any one of the constituents that I knocked on their door. That being said, when I look at the proposed seven and I look at the percentages, John seemed to think that with district five, if that would have been accepted, it was out of parity, it was at fourteen percent. And John felt that there was no problem with having the UARB board making the case.
Yeah.
So I look at, so this is where, where I guess I would ice it currently is that district one is within the plus or minus ten percent. District two sits right now at a thirteen point five. District three is right on the bubble, like maybe one voter off, two, or two voters off, two electors off, I guess. Then district four and five, if you take Grand Grab from one side to the other, it puts you within the ten percent as well. So the only district you still have sitting out is district five, district two, if it remains the same, at thirteen point five percent. So the minor change that I would recommend would just be the one of the Grand Grab. Currently, the residents of Lennox Passage are already in district two. I don't know that the, the UARB board is going to accept making the numbers worse by pushing them further, but that's just the...
So you're, so you're, just so I'm understanding, you're, you're suggesting stick with the, basically the status quo, except put all of Grand Grab into district five?
Yeah, I believe that's where it switched, for whatever it fixes, yeah. Is it four that's over?
Yeah. Five is really close as it is right now, we just have to come up with a new line.
Yeah.
Basically, if you wanted to have the whole road in it.
Yeah.
Yeah. The majority of the road, I think, is in four.
Yes, I think so.
But I think that small tweak makes the...
You were talking about putting the whole community into that.
Yeah, are you suggesting putting it in four or five, I guess?
I'll tell you when you can find that map, right? Deputy Warden?
Well, the, because the only way to make that work would be the whole community would be in five, not in four. That would put four and five both within ten.
And, yeah, and I get that. And I think the, you know, the, the only issue to have that with that in five is because five geographically is over fifty percent of the county as it is.
Exactly.
So if there was ever a case to be made for one to be smaller, although in reality, it was almost dead on to parity. It was within one or two percent as it was.
Yeah.
I don't know that, you know, that, you know, whoever it would be in the future representing it, I don't know that it would be a great idea to continue to add to it for two reasons. One, Grand Grab is really close to St. Peters and identifies probably more with St. Peters. And also, you know, the second part of that is just based on the fact that the current map now, I believe it's fifty point nine percent of the county geographically is in district five. So just over half.
Thank you Deputy Warden. So I think councillor Diggden, it sounded like you were suggesting five was minor, like to stick with the five sort of status quo with, with these tweaks, but leaving Lennox Passage with district two?
Well, I just, I, again, I'm, yeah, I...
It's a suggestion, I'm not asking for a decision, yeah.
So I guess my answer would be yes, to leave Lennox Passage, but just for, for two reasons. One, because they're already, I guess, represented by district two.
Okay.
By taking them away is just going to increase district two's number further and then increase district three's number further
Okay.
from parity. And I, I'm thinking the closer we can get to that ten percent. Again, I do recognize that the plus or minus, you know, can be up to twenty-five when we can show, yeah, I guess,
Yeah.
reason?
For sure, yeah.
I think it's got to be pretty, you know, to get even close to twenty-five though, it's got to be pretty good reasoning. Like even from reading through that report. And I know your reference to some of them being way out years ago. It seems that the UARB has tried to tighten that over time and get it in closer. It's not, it's not impossible, but we'd have to have some exceptionally good reasoning.
Yeah, and I think the reasoning that I use in, in my talks was that when you take the distance from district two currently and to start adding the Whiteside, Euroville, Grantville, just the separation alone, almost a, you know, four or five kilometer stretch of, you know, inhabited land or uninhabited, you know? You know, I guess right there alone just shows that there is no community, I guess, bond or...
Yeah. Okay, thank you councillor Diggden. All right, so I guess I'll go if that's all right. So my suggestion is that we would make a tweak to the status quo as well for a lot of the reasons councillor Melanie Sampson has, has talked about and that it was such a big change in twenty fourteen. Those changes, I think, are starting to foster some big picture thinking and maybe a little less sort of in my backyard parochialism kind of thinking and hoping that we could keep on that track until the population hopefully might warrant additional councillors or representatives in the region. My suggestion is, is also to return Lennox Passage to district three. I think you make a good argument there, you know, rationale there councillor Melanie. Although I completely get your point as well councillor Diggden, that people, you know, would kind of get used to it perhaps over time. But one of the things that I was looking at, because like, you know, to councillor, to the deputy warden's point about parity is that, you know, how do we get as close as possible while maintaining these kind of areas of interest and strong boundaries? My thought was, is there a change that we could be doing in Al Madam with two councillors specifically for Al Madam? Where we would kind of get your, you know, get the, a little bit more of an even, even split between the two councillors on, in, on the island. So getting sort of a bit closer to, so that's our consultant calling in for folks who are wondering, so...
Hi John.
Hello, how are you doing?
Chris, we're just having that discussion, okay?
I'm sorry, I'm going to phone you on another one because I can see this one's going to be difficult, okay?
Yep. Okay, so, so closer to like a minus twelve percent for each? And I don't know that that's possible or reasonable, but I just thought it would at least put, it would kind of create some even representation on the island for the two councillors, yes, go ahead.
To your point, again, I didn't really comment about it because again, the, like district one and two are not my districts, right? And I know that you were at, was there any conversation, you guys had multiple sessions? Like, I know that in the surveys, there was discussion about Ayrshire being split. I know I've seen some, you know, kind of correspondence on that. But what was, was there any discussion about that at any of the sessions? Because I, you know, we talk often about communities being separated from other communities, but this is literally a community being separated. And I'm just wondering if there's been any feedback on that.
So I, I can honestly tell you, in all the, in all the sessions we had, there was really one gentleman that, that made himself, or made it, made it clear that he would like to see...
All right, yeah, I think that's a little better, can you hear me fine?
Yes. Okay.
There was, there was one gentleman that had, you know, would have liked to have seen Ayrshire just as all of Ayrshire, as a community in district one. Then I, I think when we showed him the maps and the proposed changes and what could happen and explained to him that, you know, moving, by moving over district one also moves over district two, which creates that separation and then you, you know, you potentially have less, I guess you possibly could have less representation at some, at some point on the island. And when he asked for an explanation, I said, you know, and again, to your point back a long time ago was any councillor can run in any district.
Yeah.
And that is a fact. To that point, you have a better chance running in a district where you're well-known than you would running in one that you're not even part of the community, the culture, the upbringing, the, you know? So I, I think he, when he looked at the map, he, he was more, he was then more, I guess, open to the fact of having two councillors represent the island than he was of having Ayrshire broke up more.
But I think what we're sort of talking, like, I think to your, I don't know what your suggestion was in terms of making the numbers jive a little more evenly. But I, I just wondered if, if there was a way that Ayrshire could be
Right.
together in a district.
So I, I haven't explored the numbers that far. What I did was I changed to get you closer, to get the two councillors on, in Al Madam closer to the twelve, you know, minus twelve percent.
Right.
It was just, it's still not within parity, but it's like two percent off, you know, it's so close, right? Was I, instead of having a hundred and seventy people from Ayrshire in, in district two, I put two hundred and twenty people in district two. And I don't know what that would mean to the line. But I'm sure when you look at Al Madam as a whole, there are other ways we could achieve that, that might, yes, make more sense.
Yeah, so instead of one seventy, you said two twenty, so that's fifty. And, and the only way to do that is if you went from the New Horizon Senior Club to Island Street and then Bynett's, Bynett's Lane or whatever, which is almost right in line with each other, you probably get, you know, you're looking at Island Street and you're looking at the foyer in Ayrshire, you're probably looking at the fifty, sixty voters right there. So my area, instead of New Horizon Senior Club, my area would stop at Bynett's Lane and Island Street. That would be probably the fifty or sixty, and I know where you're going because right now councillor Diggden's at thirteen thirteen, I'm at thirteen seventy-three, so that's sixty voters in the difference.
Exactly. It puts you a little closer.
Right, so if you're looking at twenty-seven Hearn in total, if he had fifty extra, that would put me at whatever, you know, and him at close to the exact same numbers, right?
And, and again... Especially if Lennox Passage would be returned to district three.
Right, exactly.
Then it would be actually exactly the same.
Right, right. And those two lanes are almost like, you're going up this lane and you're making a little bit of a left and going up Island Street, it's almost like parallel with each other, right? So that change could work.
Yeah, okay, thank you councillor Sean Sampson, Deputy Warden.
Yeah, two comments. One was, so in that scenario, you were talking about Lennox Passage was taken into account?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That it would be in district three, was it?
Right.
Okay, yeah. And then the second thing is, yeah, we can ask John this, I guess, to an extent, and Troy. Do we have time to, to sort of redo those maps again?
Right, and that's what I...
Just based on the fact that we... We, you know, understanding was it would be nice to have a decision tonight. It's been six, seven months that we've been working on this, and I know it's ramped up more recently, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I would ask that to John and to Troy. Um.
So I do, I do have that on my list of questions, but I'd just like to finish, if that's okay, uh, 'cause I did have a couple of additional tweaks, and I'm sorry for going on at length. But you guys are asking great questions, so. Um, so it, you know, and again, that that suggestion for, uh, Alma Dam, I'm recognizing that I'm not a counselor here. And I would definitely defer to your your, um, connections and expertise here. My suggestion also was, because when we take Lennox Passage out of District Three, it does throw. Uh, that district out of parity. My suggestion was to look at moving Saint George's Channel over to District Four, but I. I do completely take your points, uh, Counselor Melanie, and I I would be supportive of either or, and I know. You know, when I think about it on a personal level, I would absolutely, uh, jump at the chance to represent that community, but I also understand it's not about. My personal love for the breakfast at Saint George's Channel Hall.
We can both still go.
We can both still go, which we did last time. So, uh, you know, it's, you know, it's a bigger issue than that. So I'm, you know, I wouldn't, um. I wouldn't, I'm not a opposed to either one, but I did recognize that moving Saint Saint George's Channel from District Three to District Four. Would return your district to parity, um, at about nine percent over the average. Uh, but then, of course, it puts District Four over the average, uh, and then, you know. My feeling is that that's okay, because the rationale there is that I do, you know, there there isn't that district of population density within the Saint Peters area. That, you know, you can surface a lot of people in a much shorter amount of time to the Deputy Warden's point, where it's not covering fifty percent of the geography of the county. Um, so my feeling is that District Five should be a little bit less, um. Because of that incredible distance that a counselor there has to travel, uh, compared to the other areas. So my my feeling is we would fix the issue with the few voters on Grand Grav Road to put them in District Four. Uh, originally, that was my thinking, but, you know, if we left Saint George's Channel in District Three. Uh, which I think presents, you know, there's a really good argument for that, then I guess I would suggest putting all of Grand Grav into District Four. From District Five. It would put that district at about fourteen percent over parity. Uh, but it would give District Five a go to minus one point four percent. And again, to cap to the Deputy Warden's point, that it's such an incredibly large. Territory to cover. So, so at this, you know, the the suggestion I'm making then at this point would be basically. Uh, you know, four of the five districts are slightly out of parity, but no one is. Out of, like, completely out of whack. We're still within numbers, within a couple hundred voters of each other per district, so. Okay, so that's my suggestion. Um. Yeah, Deputy Warden, you look like you had a question.
Yeah, no, I I I I get all your, uh, your reasoning on that, and it makes perfect sense. Um. I kind of said from the beginning, and we have to sort of exclude ourselves from these conversations to an extent, 'cause I said. In all honesty, I liked the idea of seven originally, but I also like the district as it is, and I think we probably all feel that to an extent. About liking the districts as they are. Um, but, you know, it's it's to think of somebody in the future.
That's right.
Covering that geographic area, it it can be a deterrent for people, so, and that's. E- even though it's a small addition, that's where I'd I'd be fine with that, um, not adding to it, you know, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Warden. So where that leaves us, I think, is, um, with the question, you know, my my feeling at this point is that. Um, you know, we would maybe hear from, uh, John, so thank you, John, for joining us this evening. Um, you know, I think what we're hearing around the table is pretty much, uh, consensus around not. Uh, going with one of the existing, um, uh, sort of scenarios that really are. Almost a hundred percent focused on voter parity. Um, we would like to explore the status quo with those tweaks that were discussed. Um, and I guess my question to you at this point is that, um, you know, given our deadline, um. You know, would there be time for us to provide you with this information so that you could create a new map? Uh, with the tweaks that we're discussing here, once we come to a final decision on it? How how much time would that take? And I'll over to you for a comment on that.
Okay, um, I I actually just, uh, put in the chat there that, uh, they're trying to follow the conversation, but I. I couldn't really follow the details, so I'm not too sure exactly what the tweaks are that you're talking about, but. Um, making up a new map. Uh, is not particularly difficult. It it'll largely depend on, so I have a J I F analyst I'm. Work with, I'll have to see about her availability, but the actual making of the map in the framework that we've. We've got, you know, which is pretty well established, uh, it probably should only, it shouldn't take more than a day. Um, so maybe we could prepare a new map tomorrow.
Oh.
Uh, but that's gonna depend on exactly, uh, what she has on her plate.
Great.
And obviously brought this up with her at all.
Okay, thank you, John. That's great. Okay, um, so I think that that sort of answers the question you had around timing, because that was a con- definitely a concern for me as well. Um, my suggestion, I think, at this point, um, would be, you know, this evening, if we could. Um, probably get a motion on the, like, the number of districts, that it's the status quo with the following tweaks. To the map, then authorize me and perhaps Troy to work with John to bring a final copy of the mapping back to council. We would probably need to have a special council meeting, maybe that first week of February.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and make sure that we develop our strong rationale and and I just wanna recognize. Uh, you know, that there's a member of the public here who is good enough to come and attend one of the sessions, and that was your your comment, so. Uh, we need to make sure that we have a strong rationale for what we put forward. So would counselors generally be okay with that process?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
So what kind of a, like, where have we sort of land? Like, I think we've all, it certainly sounds from around the table that we've landed on five with tweaks. I think the discussion is more about what do the tweaks look like. I think we need to come to a decision be, I mean, we. Yeah.
And maybe is that one of the questions that we should have for John before we make those tweaks?
Pardon?
Does he, does he feel that if we, if we do hover around the eleven and twelve percent? For four out of five districts?
But we're gonna need to provide a strong rationale in terms of why we're doing that.
Right, so so we need to provide it to John. John needs to provide it to the U A R B.
Well.
I guess in my question.
Suggested we would do, we would do that when we would have our special meeting. Yeah.
Yeah, my question, I guess, to John prior to all that would be, does he feel that that's something that we can push through? Hey, he does.
Well, I honestly, I think we're asking for an an opinion. You know what I mean? Like, I, yeah, I'm.
They they have been approved with chi- with with variances that are whatever larger, it's about whether or not we can provide strong enough rationale to support it.
Yeah.
I mean, the report that that John sent to us that we read for the meeting today. Clearly showed that, you know, in the years when the when the when the plus or minus was thirty-three percent, people were pushing the limits. When it was twenty-five percent, they were at or over the limits. But they were still approved because they had strong rationale. So I think that, you know, you know, officially, the limit is like the plus or minus twenty-five. The U A R B is really saying. You know, what they really want is ten percent. So, yes, we're going a bit over those, like, recommended, you know, we're between the ten and twenty-five. But with strong rationale, and I think anybody who would look at a map and see the way we were trying to do a five district to be. Within parity, that, you know, our rationale to keep the pe- keep the communities together is is strong. I think. The fact that we did have such a huge change eight years ago, I think will hold some weight, but I, you know, I think to the Warden's point, it's really. You know, we can ask, you know, we can ask John's opinion, of course, but it is his opinion.
And and as you mentioned, uh, Counselor Melanie, I mean, uh, you know, keeping the communities together is is a strong argument, and I'm sure that, uh. That's gonna be looked into and 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 considered strongly. Uh, but like you said, it's not like we're all at. Minus twenty-four or plus twenty-four.
Right.
Or at twenty-five.
And in the past, that was a strong argument, right? Like, it specifically said, at that time, the argument was to keep the communities together, to blah, 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 like. All of the arguments that we're talking about making are all the ones that in the past, when councils have put forth recommendations that have been outside of the ranges. Were found to be acceptable by the U A R B, right? And I I recognize that, of course, boards, like everything else, change from year to year and. And this this board may determine that they really wanna stay within that, and if they do, you know, we have to recognize that when we're presenting something.
Right.
That's not sort of what they've said they'd like to see, that we could, they could come back with something different, but. We need to do what we think is right for for our county and for.
Yeah.
The residents of of the county, and I I think that's what we're talking about doing.
No, no, for sure, yeah. And and what makes me feel comfortable and gives me confidence is that, again, like I said, it's not like we're all at minus twenty-four, minus twenty-five.
Yeah.
And there, we gotta sell this. We're all at maybe minus eleven, minus twelve, or blah, you know, so we're, we're very close, and we're pushing.
Yeah.
That agenda, right? So I think we should be okay, in my opinion.
And the two percent variance is like how many people, like it's.
Right.
You know what I mean? Every percent variance is not very many people, so it's not a lot of a difference.
Right.
Yeah.
So, um, the tweaks then that I, uh, have noted from all of the conversations is that we would go with, uh, the five district scenario. Um, with the status quo, uh, but specifically the changes we would be doing, would be adding Lennox Passage back to District Two. That we would. Sorry, District Three, wrong, 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 District Three. Can't count. Um, that we would create more equitable division on Alma Dam between the counselors, if possible, uh, that. You know, works for the communities, that we would move Grand Grav to District Four. And that we would, I also would like to throw in, maybe fix the issue with the two voters in, I think, the Teberville area and move them to connect to the River Bourgeois area. That would, I think, repair a lot of the issues that we had been hearing about with the last elec- election, so. Um, and and leave Saint George's Channel in District Three, 'cause I think Counselor Melanie Sampson, you you make a great point there. It was originally in my. The math just worked so beautifully, and I, but you can get sucked in by the math sometimes. It's about people, not numbers, though. Yeah. So would folks be generally supportive of those tweaks? So I'm seeing a yes from the Deputy Warden, Counselor Melanie?
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, counselors, Counselor Digdon or Sampson?
Yeah, we're good, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
He's drawn me a map of Airyshad.
Okay, I I I see that. That's great. Real-time planning. I still think we should get Stan Tech to do.
I was kind of babying. I was kind of babying my idea.
Can I, I mean, can I make a little bit of a, just a little suggestion? So when we're talking about Airshad in particular, right, and we're talking about fifty and where that. You know, again, like, you guys have done a little bit of like, uh, I I call it, um, like, loop thing or whatever, you know, trying to figure out where that could look like. But if before we come to the special meeting, I think it would be. A good idea for for everybody to see that map, and then if you, if you especially, the two of you see something that's glaringly. A concern that we.
Flag it in advance.
Right, flag it in advance so that we could ask John to tweak that a bit, just so that we may, you know, we're not making a decision by email or anything, but just. They have another option so that when we come together, that that we're not saying, oh, no, I don't like the way that's divided. Now we can't vote today because we're not happy with that division, right? So I I think we wanna try to be. We we want to highlight any flags before we get to that special meeting that we may see.
Yeah, I would, I would echo that.
Yeah.
Just because we don't wanna end up coming for a special meeting and end up walking away saying, okay, we're just gonna make one more adjustment.
And it's not something that John can do on the fly, right? Like, as he said, he has to go to a specialist. They have to, they have the specific where everybody lives to make the map, so it's it's. It's work, right? We wanna make sure it's done properly.
Yep, and their deadline looms.
And our deadlines.
Yes.
But I'm I am, I'm excited about this, and I I have to say there were some, you know, that. There was a comment that in the old days, maybe it would have been like, okay, we're just gonna put it out there, and then it's gonna be, you know. Four against one, or two against three, or whatever the case may be, and I'm, I really like this process where we're trying to kind of have a discussion and. Be a little more collaborative about it, so I I think that's a, I think that's a sign of the modernization of councils in general, and I'm really. Really pleased with how how this is going. It's, you know, it's, we're not all coming out with what we thought, but, uh.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what, you know.
That's what it's all about.
Negotiation is, right?
I totally agree, Madam Morton. I mean, like the residents in question said, you're not talking only about community parity, you're talking about council parity here, right? So it's good to see, and I think it's it's a great process, right? So it's good.
Okay, so at this point then, I'm gonna ask for a motion to have the Warden and C A O work with Stan Tech on a new map that would include the following changes. Would be to add Lennox Passage to District Three, uh, explore a more equitable equitable division on Alma Dam between the counselors, to move Grand Grav to District Four. And to fix the issue, uh, to move the voters in Teberville to return them to District Four as well.
Yeah, so I guess just to add to that, so that John does know where the line would potentially, the next.
Well, we can, I'm thinking we'll work a little collaboratively with you folks on that to make sure that the map that's created is. Specific, since you seem to have the civic address.
The the next line that literally literally moves over is Highland Street and then Minnet's Lane, just kind of.
So we'll, we'll kind of explore that and and, yeah, make it specific. I don't wanna put it too specific in the motion.
Yeah, no.
I wanna leave a little bit room for, to make sure that it makes sense for, like I said, not just the numbers, but the people, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Excellent.
So that's the motion I'd be looking for at this point.
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Sean Sampson, uh, has made the motion. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Counselor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Oh, Deputy Warden, did you have something? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. All right, so thank you very much, John. We'll be in touch, and I'll be able to give you some. Specifics, I think, between Troy and I. We'll arrange to have a chat maybe later in the week and, uh.
Okay, okay, there we go.
Yeah. Great. Thank you so much.
Thanks, John.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Okay.
Bye.
Bye. Okay. Oh, wait, there's more, there's more to do.
There's more to do, yes, ma'am.
Counselors, that was a great discussion. Um, the next item on the agenda is, uh, notice of motion regarding the amendment to the Private Ways Bylaw. Which is Bylaw sixty-six in order to add Section Five repeal and replace. Um, so this is just a notice of motion. We don't need the motion right now, but just, um, I don't know, maybe I'll ask Troy to give you a little. A quick little, uh, blurb on why this is appearing on the agenda at this point in the game.
Yep, uh, this is one that was kind of started midstream with us, and there was one little section that's missing, and that is that. When you amend it, you would need to repeal and replace all the previous versions. So that little blurb was missing in our bylaw, and when we submitted it, uh, they kicked it back and said, hey. You need this, so, uh, of course, you need your repeal and replace, and, uh, that will go in. That'll be advertised, and it'll be appearing for your first reading at the next council meeting. Then we can do the process again.
Okay. Thank you. So any questions for Troy on that? Okay, so here none. Uh, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, and that's correspondence. There was nothing under action required. Uh, for information purposes, we did receive a letter from the Diocese in, I'm always struggling with that.
Diocese?
Diocese, but it's Dios, Diocese in? Anyway, someone will correct me, I'm sure, in the days to come. Uh, on the Environment Committee regarding E V charging stations, and, um, it looks like. Uh, the Anglican Diocese of Halifax and P E I is interested in offering church parking lots in suitable locations. To municipalities for the establishment of E V charging stations, which I think is a really innovative idea. Yeah, so any questions on that, uh, item? Deputy Warden?
When I looked through their, from their website, I didn't see any listed for here. Do they?
Well, no, because there was the one here, but it's no longer. It's 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 not, uh. Uh, classified as a church anymore, right? So I I don't think it's on their list. I looked at the map, too. There was nothing in Richmond County.
It sounds like a great idea, just to know if there's anything we can do with it.
Applies to us, but it's really innovative thinking, you know?
That's why it went into info only, and there's no action for us, sadly, sadly.
Okay. Okay, and, um, there's no other questions on that item? Okay, so the next item is the review of the action items. Are there any questions regarding the action items? Okay, um, hearing none, I'm gonna move us on. There were no items added, so we'll open for our final question period for the evening. This would be restricted to the remainder of the agenda, following the Committee of the Whole and Bylaw Policy Committee reports. And the number to call is nine oh two, two two six, nine eight eight five. It's nine oh two, two two six, nine eight eight five. And we'll just leave that open for a minute, and thank you again, Shelley. All right.
That was great.
Yeah, great discussion.
And if they give us the street, then we can just do a blow up of that area.
All right. Okay, so I'm not hearing any phones ringing, I'm not seeing any members of the gallery, uh, looking for questions this evening, so. Um, we will, uh, move to in camera. If I could get a motion from council, please.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Mike Digdon. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second that.
Deputy Warden has seconded the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried, so we'll move in camera. We'll just take a short break, and then we'll get back to it. All right.